All right, let's call this meeting the regional school committee to order. Please rise from the pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, on your right, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're here tonight to do finalist candidates for superintendent position of schools. Tracy, is there anything you want to tell us before we begin?
No, the floor is yours, Mr. Chair. I'll come in and talk to you once you're ready. We'll raise.
All right, fair enough.
Mr. Chair, sorry.
Yes.
We can, I just want to be right on these.
Yes, you'll get a floor for each one. Thank you.
Yes, these are all the questions that we're going to ask. We're going to ask everybody the same questions. All right, so our first candidate here, please, is Mr. Tim McCormick. I believe that is you sitting at the table for the North Brookfield Public Schools.
Correct.
All right, nice to meet you. How are you?
Nice to meet you, thank you.
Would you like to start off with any kind of opening statement? Or would you like us to just get into the questions?
I'll start with an opening statement.
Sure.
First off, I just want to thank Tracy for getting to this point. I had a chance to meet some of you at a site visit. Thank you for coming to North Brookfield. I just really appreciate that. Had a great day coming to the district here. It feels like a month ago now, but it was only a few weeks ago. But I had a chance to visit all three schools, to talk with students, to talk with staff, to talk with leadership. And it's just really impressive, really impressed with what I saw, what I heard, the questions that I was asked by students, by staff, and just a lot of great things going on. You know, I think you could look at the accountability data for the district and you could see some really high test scores overall, some really good work is going on. But when you actually see the students engaged with some high ethnic rigor and discourse, that's really, that's really what I wanted to see. And I'm very happy to see all that. But as far as who I am and why I'm here, I know you read my resume, so you know kind of where I've come from, my background. But I've been in education for 27 years. Started as a classroom teacher, where I taught science and wellness for seven years, before I went to administration for the past 20 years. I got my start at admin as an athletic director, went back to my alma mater, where I served North Brookfield for five years. But I knew that that was kind of, at the time, kind of a stepping stone, that I wanted to get into building leadership, and then at some point, district leadership. That was where I felt, and I still feel, you can be the most impactful for change. And when I think about what I do, what makes me kind of excited every day, it's that continuous improvement for students, building opportunities for kids, and striving for continuous improvement. And through my different stops as building principal, both in alternative high school and two comprehensive high schools, and now in North Brookfield as superintendent, what I've always strived for is to build better for our kids, to give them opportunities that I didn't have, but what kids want today. And that starts with a lot of things. It starts with a robust curriculum, that you can see those through lines from grades K through 12, opportunities outside the classroom, opportunities for both college and career. I spent a lot of time the last three or four years really, really building with our team pathway for kids in advanced manufacturing. And really kind of seeing that kind of fruition this past year has been very exciting. So, you know, again, I go back to what I'm all about. It's all about seeing kids achieve, letting us opportunities for them to experience new things, to transition from grade to grade, but be successful after high school, whatever that looks like for students, whether it's college, whether it's career, but making sure that we build those foundations for a really strong and bright future.
Thank you. Beth, I think you're in the next question.
Please share what, in your view, the needs of the district are, what has been fixed, what remains, and how your strengths suit you for leading the district through that.
Well, I mean, to be very honest, I mean, coming to first site visit, having two interviews, you know, finding what I read on the desk we have above, what the district, where it's at, accountability wise, doesn't paint the whole picture. So I'm not going to sit here and pretend like I know everything needs to be fixed. I think that'd be unfair if you say that. I think that when you look at a district that has some high performing traits, like Burt and Wilson, you need to ask yourself, or I ask the question, what can we do to get better, right? And I look at where's the curriculum at, what's the level of high quality instruction that's going on for all students, what are the programs that are being phased in? And those are the questions I kind of go back to. When I had conversations with the leadership team, it became very clear that there's still, I think there's still some moving parts there. I think that there's still an area of growth for kind of phasing in some of the high quality instruction materials that a lot of districts are moving into. I did talk to some teachers. I know that HMH for inter-reading has been accessed for the last couple of years. So it's looking at, you know, what is working and what needs to be revised. I think anytime a superintendent comes into a district, I did this when I came to North Brookfield, is you need to listen first. I think part of the process of developing entry plan is to come in and to meet with not just school committee, but families, teachers, and students, and find out what they think is going well, what they think needs to be worked on, and what are those opportunities for the district, what are those opportunities for all three schools? So I would very much come in listening first. I would collect as much information as I could, whether it's through stakeholder meeting groups, individual interviews with teachers or parents. There's many platforms you can use to collect some data through surveys, but to grab as much information as possible before I start to make those kind of instant decisions. I know the district is currently going through some planning, and what I would like to do, what I would do, is I would take that plan, once it's completed, and make sure my entry plan is aligned with what that plan is articulated for the district. I think it's very important to be on the same page, because from that overall district-wide plan, funnels down to your three building improvement plans. So you want to make sure that your entry plan, the strategic plan, and those school improvement plans are all aligned. So that's how I would start. And I think that that takes two, three, or four months to gather all that information and do it appropriately. So if you start in July 1, you take the summer, you take probably the first month out of the school, which really gathers as much information as possible. I would really, again, like to look at where the curriculum is at, what is working, what is not, making sure there's a through line for data 12, making sure that we have a consistent message with what we're teaching our kids, are we on the grade level? And more importantly too, is how we are assessing where our kids are at, what is our data cycle approach for collecting that data and presenting that data to our teachers and to the general public, and really kind of showcasing the good work we're doing, but also those continued areas, those areas of growth.
Thank you. Lori, would you please take the next question?
Yes. Please discuss your regional school experience, including what strategies you've used in your past experience for dealing with multiple towns with different interests and resources.
So my regional experience was mostly with North Brookfield when I was athletic director. So North Brookfield is three towns, towns of Central Nashville. So I was not a superintendent there, obviously, I was an athletic director, so it's a little bit different, but I know, I know how the process works in terms of the assessment process, and really making sure that, again, you're striving for that continuous improvement for students while assessing towns as little as you have to. And I think that kind of goes back, maybe a question about budgeting down the road, but it really goes back to financial management. I think it's very important that you manage the budget responsibly, and that means talking with all the people involved, so whether it's time leadership, having a close conversation, close working conversation, and relationship with the business manager, making sure that you are both on the same page with what's going on financially. But really, listening to also a lot of feedback from families and your school councils to see where people are at with how this money should be, should be used. It goes back to my previous response about that strategic plan. That plan will guide us with a lot of, a lot of our decisions around where we put our parts. I think that's really important, that it's not just a document that sits on a shelf, that's a living document that we look at every time we make financial decisions for our kids. So I think that my experience is varied, but one thing I will say is that, and I've had to do this in North Brookfield, you have to be very aware of where your evolving accounts are, you have a very close grasp on, obviously, where your school choice is, where your circuit breaker funding, where that is at, but also your D and D. And I think if you maximize those three accounts, you can do a lot of kind of pro-planning, you know, looking forward, not just the next fiscal year, but two, three years down the road. If you have those funds built up, we can kind of move those into places we need to be and support those positions that need to either come back to the district or save those positions. I think that's really going to be the benefit of the two towns. So, you know, that's some of my experience, and obviously, I think, you know, there's always opportunities to learn as well. I think that, you know, having a strong relationship with the business manager and the town leadership will really enhance that.
Lisa, would you please take the next question?
What has been your experience in building and managing relationships with stakeholders like parents, families, and communities, particularly those with negative views or a negative approach? So basically, how do you build and maintain trust?
So I think there's a lot of pieces to that question. I think for me, as a superintendent, it's about being visible. I think the superintendent oftentimes can get a reputation of being the person that's not approachable, the person who works up on the hill, comes down every once in a while, but that's not how I operate. I think that I want to meet families, I want to meet families where they're at, I want to meet teachers, I want to be in their classrooms, I want to meet kids. One of the great things that, about my job, is that I can see kids every day, and I can be in their classes, I can see what's going on with them on a day-to-day basis. And kids know who I am. They know that I'm a superintendent, they know my name, and that's a good feeling. And I don't think that needs to change, no matter where I go. And I think you also need to bring parents and families into the school as much as possible, right? The school day doesn't end at 2:00 or 2:30, right? The schools are really the epicenters of the community, and I think you want the villages to be open as much as, much as you can. And that means showcasing some of the great work that students and teachers are doing, having them fit for, not just your curriculum meetings and your athletic events, but as many opportunities as possible to showcase the great learning that's going on in the district. And sometimes that's not enough. Sometimes you have to meet, again, meet families where they're at. In previous districts, I've been, I've done workshops at community centers, because that's where people were located. I brought pizzas into those same facilities, just so that, you know, if parents needed a meal, maybe childcare, we supplied that. We made sure that that was in place, so they can come out and see what's going on with their son or daughter in school. You know, I think the other, the way to combat some of that negative kind of information about school is to be very timely and transparent with the communication. That doesn't mean that you rebut everything that you see on Facebook. What it means is you're getting out your version of the story, you're getting out the facts about what's going on in the school. You're celebrating the successes of the district, you're talking about the great work that your students, the teachers, your leadership team are doing on a day-to-day basis, you're getting that out in front of parents as much as possible. And then, you know, when you have the opportunity to be at a game, to be at an event, to be at an open house, you're approachable, right? I mean, I'm a dad of three kids, my youngest is almost four. I love to talk about what's going on in someone's life, and I love to share stories about my kids. So that's, that's would be my approach, I always had to my approach, but it's that matching that visibility, that easy, that ability to talk to anybody, you know, meet them where they're at, but also bringing them to the schools as much as possible, so we can really celebrate what we're doing.
Megan, would you please take the next question?
Please give an example of how you've used networks and relationships to advocate, solve problems in your current district.
So many different ways. So I'm lucky to be part of multiple superintendents groups. Leading Now is a national group that I'm a part of, I've been part of that for now two and a half years, so we're superintendents from all over the country. And it's a great network, because we can bring problems of practice to the group, it's a safe space for us to work through that problem of practice, and give each other feedback on what's going on in our district, which is probably going on in 50 districts across the country. I had the opportunity to go to Washington DC last summer for a conference by sponsor of Leading Now, Two Summers Village in Columbus, Ohio. So again, we're meeting with superintendents that are all over the country, that we're all sharing some of the same challenges, both financially, socially, you know, with all kinds of different obstacles. And it's great to be in a room with a like-minded people trying to solve those problems. On a more local level, you know, we have the Winston County Super sense Association, which is a great network of people. I have a Southern Winston County collaborative, which is part of that group, about 17 school districts. I'm currently also in a group called MSN, that's just School Superintendent Support Network. Mr. Gamm is actually part of that as well. So that's 24 superintendents across the state, with kind of that same model as Leading Now, where you come together once a month, you talk about a problem of practice in your district, and the group kind of weighs in. I'm always a big advocate of the answers in the room, right? So if I don't be the answer, someone else does, and we can kind of work on that together, collaboratively. But in regards to kind of moving a school district forward as well, I think you have to have strong community partnerships. With our kind of phase in a role, if you will, of our advanced manufacturing pathway, we've started to build a really strong partnership with Byroom Corporation, right town. We've done some work with Flexcon, which is in Spencer, Mass. And those two companies kind of really embrace advanced manufacturing. It gives us a connection with two national worldwide companies, actually, that our kids can see the opportunities that are there for them outside of the school district. And so those partnerships have allowed us to establish more work-based learning opportunities for our kids, more job shadowing, but just to bring experienced professionals to come into the district to see what we're providing for our students. So there's a lot of networking that goes on there, so it's both, you know, at that kind of superintendent level, but also throughout the community, that we can really work together and kind of support each other with that same common goal.
So we have a question here about your experience with collective bargaining. What has your experience been?
Quite a bit. So I've been at the negotiating table now, it's been two cycles, for the teachers, the support staff, so that's parent professionals, ADAs, and custodians. And I was actually pulled into that conversation, if you will, back when I was a building principal for the year, for my first year in the district. So I had the experience from both sides, or not both sides, but as a principal and now in the last, you know, four years as a superintendent. And I know that across the state, there's been a lot of negative press around negotiations, and there can be, there can be a lot of contentious arguments and conversations. But I think what we've been able to do in North Brookfield is have a clear kind of sort of ground rules. I think that people may have differences, but we treat each other with some dignity and respect in the process. And, you know, I think what it comes down to is we keep the difficult conversations behind closed doors. We don't get into a public smear campaign, if you will. We face those challenging conversations head-on. And in negotiations, you're not going to get probably everything you want, that's just the way it works. But you need to, I think, on the side of the superintendent and the school committee is be financially responsible, fiscally responsible, but ultimately, is what we're doing is best for our kids. And I think that's kind of, I'm grounded by that statement in pretty much everything I do, is the decision we're making is it what's best for our kids. And I think we've been able to navigate some of the challenging decisions or conversations based on that premise. And again, I think that, you know, we don't, we don't have a lot of fanfare, we don't have a lot of, again, a lot of back and forth with social media, but I think it's by and large because we set very clear ground rules, we know what the expectations are, we set limits to our negotiation meetings as far as the timelines are concerned, but we're very thoughtful with how we kind of present our information. So, you know, so again, I've been through two cycles for each of those bargaining units, and I think that you get better as you go along, but it's something that I have a fair amount of experience with.
Thank you. Jess, would you please take the next question?
What's your experience with advocacy and grant writing for additional resources and support for the district?
So this is something that I've had to do a lot of in North Brookfield, for many reasons. I think that, and I've talked about this in a previous interview, but in order to support the local budget, we had to do a lot of grant writing for our H2IM, our high quality instruction materials. So, and being a small district, being a small neighborhood in Wilson, we, there's no grant writer, so that was essential to me. So all the kinds of grants, I wrote, I wrote those. So, you know, what I'm referring to is bringing in, particularly the way, for example, Open Si Ed, we just phased in TKP, which is a great eighth grade service curriculum. That was all funded through the One H Foundation. So that's a great organization that I found about two and a half years ago, that really supports the rollout of that, those concepts of online applied learning for students, and they offer a whole kind of menu of great H2IM. On top of that, I've written grants for school safety and mental health. I've written a grant for some IBAC updates, so that was $100,000 for some of our software to enhance some of our just temperatures in classrooms, essentially, is where that money went to. But all in all, over half million dollars in the last couple of years of grants that we've written and been approved for. So it's really part of the job, it's part of the job. I mean, even in communities that are able to fund the districts well above net school spending, you still have to infuse a lot of grant opportunities to support kind of the next steps that you want to provide for your kids, for your students. So it's become pretty complex. In fact, on Monday, I wrote another grant for some more history curriculum for students for next year, for grades three through seven, investigative history is the name of the H2IM. So I know that, I know that Burt and Wilson has some of these already in place, but it's something that I think if we're not looking at it as a viable option, we should be, because I think that grants can really infuse a lot of what we want to do. Now, the only downside with grants is that you have to look at the lifespan, and once they're done, how can we sustain what we started? And I think with some thoughtful planning, you can do that most of the time. I know that particularly the way, that grant for us, we're in year three of one of those that's ending, but we've made sure that we can infuse all the consumer materials we need for several years to come in the local market. So it just took some planning to make sure that we have what we needed, but the grant allowed us to get up and running and get that, that great curriculum started for our kids.
Excuse me. Beth, please.
How have you had to balance a budget while maintaining integrity of education in your past experiences, and how will you do that here?
So I think it's important to, when you're presenting a budget, especially the first time around, I think it's very important to, to really articulate, if we had all the money in the world, or we didn't have as many limitations or obstacles as we do in most communities, this is what we, what we want, and this is why. Conversely, I think it's very important, if we do have to eliminate positions, to really articulate the impact that the loss that this will have on our students, to be very clear with that messaging, you know, so that's two different fronts. But I think, again, it goes, when I think of budgeting, I think of the fiscal responsibility that is required to present a budget appropriately. And I think even when you are asking for those pie in the sky kind of positions or programs that you know that maybe aren't in the works for this year, you need to have a backup plan. So if we don't get this, how can we make this work? I mentioned this in a previous question, you know, you're always trying to minimize the assessments of the two communities while maintaining the high quality education for all kids. So if you're not getting the money that you need or you think you need initially, how do you support those programs? Is it through grant funding? Is it through finding the grants to support it for the next couple of years? Is it to, is it by switching positions, is it moving positions within the budget? There's a lot of ways that you can kind of look at how to make, how to do more with lessons, in ways. But I think it goes back to that constant collaboration and conversation with the business manager, with the building principals, but also with your teachers. I think it's important for building principals and directors to have those conversations with teachers who are on a grand level every day, what's working, what do you need, and what can we do to support you? You know, when we think about rolling out new curriculum, it's, it can be tricky, because if we don't support teachers with the appropriate PD, if we don't budget for that, that curriculum may not be as impactful as we thought it would be. So you need to make sure that we budget for the PD, for those teachers, to make sure that PD is relevant, that PD is timely, and to make sure that they're receiving all the support they need to make sure that they can deliver that high quality instruction every single day. The budgeting process is, the first draft never, is never the one that's voted on. So there's always a give and take. It's just like negotiations. If we're back to the drawing board with suggestions, you have to look at making sure that the billings are both, both state for students, if there are capital improvements that need to be into the budget, that is also a priority. So those all need to be baked into the budget as you go through the process. And I think that what I've been able to do the last three or four years is present the rationale behind the budget effectively to finance committee, even though they may not always agree with where our numbers may line up, I can always articulate, this is why we need this position. I can always let them know, this is why this position is really best for our kids. And from there, it's really kind of making sure those numbers work.
Thank you. So how do you imagine creating partnerships with other educational entities to create additional pathways for students, and what's been your experience with this type of work?
So my experience mostly has been with the ICP designation, so building pathways in the district. Like I mentioned, advanced manufacturing is the pathway built currently in North Brookfield. So what that means is that we have curriculum for students of grades nine through 12 in sem education. We have credentialing that's built in over the course of those four years, and we also have work-based learning opportunities for those students as they become seniors. The goal of those programs is to, is to allow or to get students ready for, to be successful college students. But the reality is that if those students don't go on to college, that they are ready and are much more employable for a higher paying job in that respective pathway. When I was in Gardner, we had some kind of, we had a, this is kind of well before there was the pathway designation, we did some, some kind of jobalike sharing, if you will, with some of our students with some neighboring districts. We were an alternative high school, so we had a very small number of students who were involved, and we had to be creative with how we educated our students. But the thing that we were seeing is a lot of our kids, if they received a diploma, if they graduated, what were they doing with that, right? So we had an opportunity for kids to do job shadow at the local vocational school, which at the time was Monty Tech, so they could, they could get kind of a taste of some of the trades that were out there, and that could be a pathway for them upon graduation. We also had them do some shadowing at Gardner High School, so they get to see kind of what was going on at the high school as well, two high schools in the city. But, you know, there's also, there's also opportunities that I would explore, and maybe it would be the right fit for Burt and Wilson, maybe it wouldn't be, but there are also opportunities to share resources with neighboring districts. So if ICP is not the appropriate move for the district, then how can we share some of the CT resources across other districts? I've seen it done very successfully in Leicester, for example, where they've combined multiple districts for different shops. That's something that we potentially look at. But I'd like to see, before we, even that far, what do we have internally? What do we have for opportunities internally? What can we do here that maybe with just some tweaking with the program studies, with some additional credentialing that we could phase in for our kids, what can we do for the next year or two before we get into that long process? So I think there's a lot of opportunities that we can explore. My experience, I have experience in both, I have experience writing the capital skills grant, that infuse a lot of the hard doorbell equipment that supports this learning. So I think, you know, that's the other piece of this, is how do you support this endeavor financially over the long term? And I think that that's something that I've had success in both fronts over the last several years.
Beth, please.
Not ready. Regarding special education and best serving all students, how do you balance fiscal responsibility while also ensuring students have the best services?
Great question. So I think there's a couple of things here. I, one thing that I, that I've, we've done a lot of work on the last couple of years, and I think would kind of go with me wherever I want, is building programs in districts, right? Trying to bring students back who are placed outside the district, bring them back to the district. We're currently building an elementary school, a therapeutic classroom for some students in our district. We have really built a, we have a Bridges Pre-K program for some ASD students who, if that program didn't exist in our district, they would be sent out as well to another place. So really building programs to support our kids in districts, having them in So really building programs to support our kids in districts, having them in their elementary school, elementary schools. So we're not sending them to, you know, putting them on a bus and sending them 45 to an hour, hour away. But I also think it, it goes back to what are we doing for our tier one and tier two supports? So are we looking at adopting co-teaching, for example? Are we looking at how are students being serviced? Are they being pulled up or is the teacher coming to them? You know, we want to make sure that, that students feel included. Inclusion is, is always the way to go. So are we pulling kids out of classes a lot? Are we, are we actually meeting where they're at and we instructing and teaching those kids in their classes with their peers? I think we also, there's also an area of, we've had a lot of success with our students support team. And, and making sure that teachers are collecting real time data on their students to see what works with their kids, what doesn't work for their students. And if things are not working for students, how will we come together as a team and building a plan to support these kids? So those pieces, those, those pieces of M T S S, you know, the tier one, the tier two, and possibly tier three supports, need to be really strong and robust within the district. Right? And I think the tier, what else starts with tier one? Making sure that teachers know what that is, making sure they know what the D cap is, district support plan is. And if, when they have a student who needs extra support, are they, are they versed in collecting data and then presenting their, their data and their, their concerns to a student support team? Outside of that, like I said, it's building those programs to support our kids. We've done a lot of work with T C I training for our staff. That's, that's a very advanced therapeutic training that supports kids before we get to the restraint component for certain students. Restraint is always the last option. So it's making sure that our, our staff is very well versed in training and de-escalation techniques and supporting kids when they're in crisis. We want, I want the district and the schools to be a place where parents want to send their kids. That if, if they send their kid to Berlin Boylston, they know that no matter what challenges that their student face, faces, that we'll have a program, a lot of opportunities for their student, right, within, within the district. And that's been something that, that I think is, is something that we've tried to do over the last four or five years, where I would bring that same mindset here, working closely with the special ed director, working closely with, with, with building principals on articulating kind of that vision across the district. And making sure that staff felt supported with that endeavor, that families knew kind of how this is all going to roll out for their students. And, and the CPAC, or the, whatever it's called in Berlin Boylston, I'm assuming CPAC. But the CPAC was very much on board with what was going on and had, had a strong voice in this process.
Lisa, please.
How do you go about balancing parents' rights, students' rights, and district educational priorities?
Good question. I, I think that there are situations where it can become, it can be tricky. I always fall back to, we are here to do what's best for our kids. And we want our kids to feel safe and supported. We want our families to feel safe and supported too, but, but the, but the reality is sometimes that isn't the real situation, right? And so, so it falls back to what are we doing for our students? And I think it, it's, it's, from there, it kind of mushrooms up. Like, what are we doing to support students who may have mental health concerns? They're, they're from the school hungry, depressed, tired. Do we have the council supports in place? Do we have anything in place as far as councils, councils coming into the building? Because I know from experience that oftentimes our adjustment councils, school councils get overworked, get overtaxed. So we need additional layers of support for those students. Are we working with families to find the appropriate supports? Not just through D C F, for example, but other agencies. Are we working with that family to get in-home support? To support what we're doing in schools to make kind of the, the overall experience, both inside, in school and outside of school, what's best for that student? So it, it, it kind of goes back to building a team, you know, fostering that team approach, getting parents on board as much as we can. We've done a lot of work with curriculum like second step, but what we've really done a lot of work around is building at all schools, is building a really robust advisory group for our kids. And that group or that, that weekly meeting that students have with a teacher really is, is really impactful with, with what's going on in their lives at that moment. And that has been something we've been tracking for the last couple of years. It's really supported a lot of our work socially with students. Coming out of COVID, we saw a really, like every district, a really increased mental health concerns for kids and for families. And so kind of leading ahead on and, and bringing some really high quality councils into the building, but also having that built into the students' daily or weekly schedule to support what's going on with students, which has been very beneficial. But again, going back to the question, it's, it's bringing parents into the conversation as much as we can. At times, we, we can't sacrifice the student's confidentiality in certain situations, but we try to bring parents and families into that conversation as much as we can, to be on the same page. I have been in situations where we've exhausted that and honestly, we've had to really kind of sever ties with members of the family in some respects in the sense that what they're doing is not, is not safe for their kid. So we had to really advocate for the student and do what needs to do to advocate for that, for that student.
Jess, please.
How do you plan to retain students who are looking for different or more advanced challenges? What can we offer to students to get them to stay?
Well, I, I would start by asking the students and the families, you know, what are we lacking, right? What do we need? Is it, is it, is it some of those pathway opportunities in health services, advanced manufacturing? The business, is it additional A P courses? Is it more, more robust elective offering? I don't think there's any one simple answer. But I think it starts with having a conversation with our students. Our students will tell us what they want and, and, you know, they, even the kids who don't know what they want yet will tell you what they don't want. So I think that's the starting point. It's having an engaging conversation with the students and their families. And that can be done many different ways, but I think that's where you start. And then, once you kind of narrow it down, if, if the district decides to move forward with a pathway opportunity, for example, it's how do we support that training for the teachers? How do we support the role of the curriculum? How do we give them impactful PD? How do we, how do we track student success? And how do we share that success out to our students, our families, and to the general public? Obviously, you want, if you, when you phase in a program or you phase in opportunities for students, if it has success, you want to be able to show that. But how are you tracking that too is very important. What data cycles are you using to capture that information? But I think, you know, there's an opportunity for Berlin Boilston to be truly a destination for students and families. There's always some tremendous things going on, so let's capture that. Let's make it better and let's market, let's market the district more. Let's market what's going on at all levels. And that can be done through, through simple newsletters, but it could also be done through some, there's some great opportunities out there to really do some really, really slick things to get parents engaged with what's going on in the district. And I think that's kind of the next step. Once you have those things in place, once you're building those new ideals, is to really get in front of it and get it out there to the families so they can see it. They have, they have access to it at all times.
Lori, please.
What is your vision for the next part of your career? What would this look like in five and in 10 years?
I would love to be superintendent district for 10 years or more. I look at Berlin Boilston as a destination. I don't look at this as, as a, as a stepping stone to another spot down the road. I think when I talk to my friends and colleagues who are superintendents or have been in these roles for a long time, the best way to impact positive change for our district, for families, for teachers, and most importantly, for students is by building a strong team and being in a position for a long time. You can't expect to, to have lasting change in just two or three years. You can change some things and you can do some good work. I'm not saying you can't. I mean, I, I've been in this role for four years, maybe. So by me saying that, if I were to be in this position next year, I've left after four years. But this is, this is an opportunity, I look at this as an opportunity where I can come in for a very long time and, and do some great work. Not that, that there will be obstacles, but I'm sure there will be. There will be many obstacles that we'll work on as the team will overcome. But I think, you know, it, it's really, it's my goal, it's, it's part of my vision to come to, to a district and be there potentially until I retire, making those, those, those strong positive changes for our kids, our families, making the district the best it can be, taking a district that's already high performing in many ways and making it even better. So that would be, that would be my next five or probably 10 plus years.
How do you plan to balance the demands of being superintendent in a district with a small central office?
It's not small to me. It's actually quite large, which is nice, which is nice. I mean, I think, again, one of the benefits of being in a small, small district is you wear many hats. And so, like I said, I'm the grade writer, I'm the director of curriculum, which has been great. But at the same time, it'd be great to have another high quality professional to work with, to get that work done. I'm always of the mindset that the answers are in the room, right? The answers are in the room, that it's not just one person can do it all. And not one person has all the right answers either. So that to be part of a, of a much larger, high performing team would be, would be fantastic. I had the opportunity to meet some of the members of the central office a few weeks ago, and it just, it seemed like they're a very dedicated, hardworking group. And that was just in a 30 minute conversation. So I can only imagine, you know, what's going on behind the scenes. But, you know, that's a great, that's a question I get from my wife quite a bit. How do, not burning out in the demands of being superintendent. But I think, you know, it's, it's, it is trying to find that work-life balance, which I can tell you I've not mastered yet. The one great thing too about parts of this position is the proximity, and we're 50 minutes away. So the great part about that for me is that I can go home and have dinner with my daughter and all and come back for events. Because like I said earlier, the date does not end at 2 o'clock. So that would, that would help, would be personally and professionally help that work-life balance. But, but the work is hard, the work is hard. And it, it's not always as rewarding as other positions, but the work is, is always there. And I, and I love that, I embrace that. You know, when I leave to go home, pretty much I know that my work is not done. I'll be back at it tomorrow morning, or I'll do some more when I get home that night. But it, it's, it's always there and it's always, it's always good work. And I think that my, my constant goal is, is always trying to produce improvement for kids and, and taking one thing at a time, or two things at a time sometimes, and really working to make them the best opportunities for our students. I don't know if that totally answered your question, but I don't know if there is one just great answer. But I think the benefit of having a larger central office team would be fantastic. You've got some veteran and skilled administrators on staff. And again, just in a very small amount of time, it's, it's clear, it's obvious. You've got some very dedicated and talented teachers who love what they do, love, love your students. And I think part of leadership is really supporting teachers to lead from within too. It doesn't fall just to building principals and directors and superintendents. It falls to really empowering those teachers to become leaders within the school's position. And I think that's an area where I think there's a tremendous amount of potential. And I'm sure it's going on now, but I think that there's obviously, there's some people that definitely would raise those roles.
So perhaps we've heard some of this already, but final question here. Why us? Why Berlin Boilston Regional?
I, I think you're a great school district. Everything that I know about the district, I know people who work in the district. I know people who, who send their kids here. The things I can find out about the district, it's, it's very intriguing. There's a lot of great things that I've already seen in action. And so, like I said, I, and you think about these roles, I think both this role. I want to be a good fit for the district and for myself. And I think that some of the skills that I break from the position, some of the work I've done over the last three, four years, the last 20 years as administrator of different roles, I think I, I've worn many hats, starting as an athletic director, building principal, superintendent. I've seen a lot, I've been experienced, I've experienced a lot. And I've, I've had the ability to work and develop some great leadership teams over the years. And I think that, that I have a, a shared vision, I've been able to build. Like leadership teams are high functioning, embrace that aspect of psychological safety, where, you know, the answer, like I said a couple of times tonight, the answer is in the room, the answer is in the group. But we've worked through those hard calls, those challenges together. And I think that Berlin Boilston has a tremendous amount of great things that are already happening. It's how do we bring in more opportunities for our kids? It's how do we make what's already working better? And how do we minimize those obstacles and the risks for the district? And I think that, that's where the work is, is still ongoing. I think every year, year in, year out, we're going to have some kind of financial concerns. That, that's kind of the way of the world, that's the way of public schools right now. But it's having those conversations with the right people frequently, often, making sure that, that they are kind of forefront of, of your mind, their mind, about what we can do to support our students and keep moving forward. So I, I, again, I think there's a lot, a lot of great opportunities here. I'd love to, to have the opportunity to kind of immerse myself. I know that, I think through one of the conversations that I was in, that Mr. Gamm would be kind of transitioning through the summer, so that the opportunity to kind of learn from the current superintendent about the district. You know, some of the work in this past two years. I would embrace that because I think it's great to have that transition plan. When I was a new superintendent, the first couple of years, I was part of a program called N C P, which is the New Superintendent Induction Program. So I had a coach for two years, three years, actually. And that's a great way to kind of get activated to the role. I think that would be a great way for anybody to kind of transition to this position, have somebody who's been here to help, to help me or whoever kind of transition to this role full time. So I would welcome the challenge. I think, I think it would be a fair opportunity for both me and the district. And I'd be excited to get started and really do some great work there.
Thanks, Tim. So that concludes the questions that we have for you. Was, is there any last, final statements or comments or anything you'd like to clarify or add to anything? Any questions for us or anything?
I don't have any questions. I think, I think the process has been, again, I think the process was great. It's been about a month now. And I've had several great conversations with, with some of you already and some members of your teaching staff, some, some students. And I think I just go back to what I said a couple of times tonight. I think this would be a great opportunity for the district, a fair opportunity for me. I think that, I think that where the district is at, what I've, my experiences, I think would be a great fit. And I, I would be someone who is always available to have a conversation. I'm reflective of my work. I do not have all the right answers all the time, but I will get back to you. And I'm, I'm a team player. And I think that if you ask people who I've worked with, people who worked for me, they will tell you that. And that I am, I'm student centered, I'm a team person. I'm always willing to work with people to make sure that we do what's best for our kids. And I would bring that same kind of energy, that same ethos, if you will, to this position. And I would, I would work extremely hard for, for the district.
All right, thank you very much, Tim. Very nice to meet you. Appreciate you going through this process for the past month or so, however long it has been. I know it's a lot to it, but thank you very much for coming.
Thank you very much, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
All right, we will recess. We do have the next one scheduled for 6:15, so we'll.
Oh, 6:15.
Yeah.
Oh, oh, perfect.
If she is early, I will bring her in. You're not committed to that time, but you do have a minute.
All right, so we'll be in recess until she's here, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.